Supervisors, and as always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We all stand, please. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and I'd just like to remind everybody that tonight's Board of Supervisors meeting is being audio recorded. It's been a few weeks since we all last got together, and I asked our EMS coordinator Frank Baxter if he could join us, and he said he was able, and I asked Frank if he could give us an update on where the township stands, where the county stands, and if our EMS community needs anything from the Board of Supervisors. Frank?
Thanks, Mark. Just wanted to report tonight, we get our daily updates from the county on the status of all the townships, including Lower Gwinnett Township, and to date, there's been 114 positive cases in Lower Gwinnett Township. Eighty of the 114 were in long-term care facilities. In Lower Gwinnett, sadly, we have lost, according to the county, nineteen deaths to COVID-19. They also, I got a report that within the long-term care facilities, thirty-five employees have been infected with COVID-19. That's where we stand today. That report just came out. The one thing that the county is doing, they're very supportive of each and every one of the long-term care facilities throughout the county. They have a task force that visits them on a regular basis. I can share publicly that the last time the task force was in Lower Gwinnett was May 4th to visit the long-term care facilities within our township. Each one of them, you know, making sure that they have the support they need, and the PPE they need, and how they're doing. So that is an ongoing event that's being taking place. As far as the emergency services, we're actually doing very, very well, and thank you very much for the support that we're getting from the township and of course, our local boroughs. But we're pretty lucky. It's been very quiet, and both on, it sounds like, the fire side and even the police side. And what's on the other hand, are, of course, we're seeing an uptick on calls, and they do monitor calls that may be, have COVID-like symptoms to take full precautions, and they sort of categorize it differently. And that has been a little bit up on the uptick. It doesn't mean it's a positive case. It just means that they are transporting individual respiratory illness issues. Other than that, we're actually blessed and in very good shape. Unless there's any questions?
Okay, Frank, you know, thank you very much. Now, the Montgomery County, as well as a number of the counties in the southeastern Pennsylvania, where the governor still has us on lockdown, is that correct?
That's correct. He just extended it throughout the state. We will still be in the red zone. It'll be going to June 4th. His order goes to extend it to June 4th. I would not see Montgomery County going to out of the red for a little bit. We are one of the high counties, and we're the next highest to Fallujah.
Wow. It's not good news.
Frank, that, from the numbers I was looking at, that's contrary to what I've seen.
It's starting to come down now, Ed. Yes, that's correct, but I think they go back so many weeks to do the analysis.
I see. Okay. But our, it seems like our numbers are falling, and here's a positive reaction and a decrease of the numbers. So, all right.
Hey, Paul, how's the police activity in the township?
Hi, good evening, everybody. My report pretty much mimics what we talked about a month ago. Activity is still really down, which is good. If anybody does get out, you'll notice traffic is very light. Retail crime is next to nothing. There's only, you know, two or three stores that are open. Everybody's behaving. The calls we do get are more serious in nature. Some mental health issues with some people. Police force is doing great. Everybody's healthy. We continue to do the cleaning, and everybody appreciates all the support they're getting.
Does the police department need anything from the Board of Supervisors?
We, so far, I would say no. We continue to get some pretty good donations. We just got two more boxes of N95s. Just dropped off from a local restaurant. We're good right now, Mark. I would let you know for sure.
And Frank, our PPE, we're okay? Does the fire companies need anything?
Not right now. The county is supplying it. They have a central distribution, and they are getting what we need when we've been asking for it. So I know that for the two fire companies, I know this budget for 2020 is going to be hit with either a fund drive, lack in fund drive, or people, you know, being unemployed, or not giving them the fund drives, or other social events, or fundraising events.
Okay. As some of you may know, there's a lot of construction now going on in the township. The, I walk the neighborhoods, and there's, you know, it seems like every block has got a contractor on it. Craig, could you fill us in on what we're doing with building permits and how that's going?
Yes, we never stopped reviewing building permits, even when we were, when everyone was quarantined, even the contractors. Contractors went back in May 1st. The week before that, the permit clerk went in and issued all the permits that were reviewed and approved, sent them out in the mail, so everyone would have them by May 1st. We're still receiving permits electronically, and still taking phone calls, responding to the contractors, responding to anyone that has any complaints or issues with the township. So we're still responding to all them. It's a little quicker when people are emailing, and we are trying to get everyone to email. You'll get a faster response that way, but with the phone calls, it is delayed a few hours until it gets through the proper channels and gets everyone out there. But within 24 hours, we're responding to everyone that calls, and, like I said, emails are quicker, and permits are flowing, inspections are continuing on a daily basis, and everyone seems to be doing well.
Okay, so we're not having any issues with the inspection subcontractor that we use, because they have to go out in the field now?
Yeah, the third-party contractor that we use, Keystone Municipal Services, they're going out there. They're out there every day. They're, you know, protecting themselves with masks and gloves, and, you know, doing their work.
All right. Now, how is our road crew doing? I saw an email earlier about a tree that fell over and blocked a road, and it was very complimentary. So are road crews around call 24/7?
They're on call. We also have one, a group maybe of two or three, every day, that are just maintaining the properties, cutting grass, maintaining the trails, responding to any inquiries that we had. So they're out there every day, about two or three of them, and they're coming in and disinfecting their trucks. And then the next day, two or three different people come in. So we have people in the building every day. All of them are on call. If there's a sewer backup, if there's, you know, any, you know, the tree fell down, we had the whole crew in, cutting down the tree and removing that. So, yes, so they're still, they're still active out there.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Craig or the staff on these issues? I'm not getting any complaints. No one is, no one's raising any concerns. I'm sure our staff is doing everything they can to stay current and stay safe and still serve the public. Matter of fact, it's a little disconcerting that I haven't heard anything. It's like, what's wrong? The silence is, I guess the silence is good, because people are staying home. They really are. I see, I see a lot of my neighbors walk in the neighborhoods. I didn't even know, I didn't even know some of these people. So it's, there's a lot of goodness in rediscovering your neighborhoods, I guess. So, on to other business. We have the receipt of the minutes for April 14th. Has the other supervisors had a chance to look them over?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion? Accept the minutes?
So moved.
All in favor? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay. Minister, accepted. Next on the agenda is receipt of the year-to-date budget report. Are there any questions from the supervisors on the report? Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the receipt of the budget report?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The balance sheet for March 2020. Does anybody have any questions regarding our balance sheet? Okay. Hey Chuck, Chuck is our finance director, for those that don't know. Could you tell us how our balance sheet looks, given everything that's transpired?
I'll do the income statement and balance sheet, if you don't mind. The financial statements you have are the balance sheets as of March 31st, 2020, and the revenues and expenses are for the entire first quarter. We haven't really seen an effect yet from COVID. In fact, our revenues for the quarter were $1,041,241, and that's up from last year, which was $786,495. It's primarily due, as of the end of March, every tax category, we were exceeding the previous year. Our expenses are down, but that's primarily due to not having any debt services here. So expenses are really flat to last year, if you take that out. Two tables there that show revenue expenses comparing year-over-year. Generally, revenues are up, with the exception of licenses and permits, interest and development, and the permits. And expenditures are overall flat, if you take out the debt service. Our cash balance for the general fund on the balance sheet as of the end of March was $3,565,748. Another thing I would note, in March, we see our liquid fuels allocation, the amount of $377,620, and that compared to a budget of $370,000. Just to bring you up to date on where we're at on the real estate tax revenue. As of yesterday, real estate tax collections were $1,359,076 versus $1,483,019 for the same period last year. It's down slightly, and I would attribute that to the fact that the discount period was extended. Works exceeding last year until that date hit. I think we'll pick back up by the end of May. Working on the April close, I do have the revenue numbers so far. Actually, the revenue numbers are finalized for April. Year-over-year, real estate transfer taxes up $120,885. Earned income taxes up $43,124. Mercantile taxes up $1,698. Local services tax up $4,126, and this privilege tax up $25,171. Another piece of good news we received today, Merckheimer informed us that they were processing an employer remittance today that included a payment from a single taxpayer in the amount of $369,000. That was associated with a one-time payout. That's going to help us out a lot at this point. We're already holding our own on the IT, and that'll help offset some of the loss that we're receiving due to COVID.
All of that is encouraging. Now, you said something briefly, and I didn't hear it all, our debt service. We're debt-free now, is that correct?
Debt-free now, but in the expenditures that we're comparing to the previous quarter, we had a debt payment in there of $233,000. So what I was saying was, if we subtract that out of last year's expenditures, the expenditures year-over-year in total are roughly the same.
Well, it's good not to have debt.
Yes, it is.
That's always encouraging. Does anybody have any question for, questions for our finance director?
No, I'd like to comment. Chuck, you're doing a tremendous job as a, as an experienced financial director, and being involved with PZATS and other townships that you chair. I'm very pleased with your reporting, and of course, the numbers. Chuck, the discount, the 2% discount was moved to the end of May, is that correct, to 531? On the real estate tax?
Yes.
Okay. I think we passed that. So I just wanted to, for the record, reiterate that, and otherwise, put the compliment to you. Job well done.
Thank you.
And Chuck, good use of the virtual background.
That one looks pretty good, Chuck. That one's, you're plugged in pretty well with that one. Good. Can I have a motion to accept the balance sheet for March 2020?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
Receipt of invoice history, I don't think we need to go over that anymore unless anybody has any questions. I have a motion to accept the invoice history for March 2020?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, other business. Authorization to purchase spotted lanternfly eradication material in the amount not to exceed $1,000. So we're late on this, and when I say we're late, it's already spring. I don't know if everybody recalls, last year, there was, the spotted lanternfly was, we were inundated. A lot of communities were hit a lot worse, and with everybody staying inside, there was little being done to limit the damage of the spotted lanternfly. So the EAC community in Lower Gwinnett has asked for an amount not to exceed $1,000, because they want to get started, and the materials are basically going to be used to stop the lanternfly from getting into the trees, or any worse than they are. The idea is to save trees, and also to save some birds, because some birds were apparently getting stuck on the tape that you use to wrap the trees with. So now the tape has to be wrapped with, like a chicken wire fence, so then the birds don't get stuck to the tape. So it sounds like a strange thing to have happen, but at any rate, this is why the, our EAC group has asked for a amount not to exceed $1,000, and it's in their budget as well. Does anybody, any supervisor have any questions?
Yes.
Are we behind the curve on this, Mark, though? You just said that we're past the hatching season?
Well, we're past the, we should have been ahead of this, more so than we are now. So we could have put the tape on the trees previous to where we are, but we don't have the materials. So we could have started this a few weeks ago. So we don't want to lose any time, any additional time, so we want to procure the material and get it out to their volunteers, who are going to go around and start taping trees.
So we do have manpower to execute and not let these goods go to waste?
Oh, sure. The EAC has plenty of volunteers.
Mark, what trees, what geographic area are they?
Well, it's any township tree where we can put them on. So Pendleton Park has got an infestation, and, you know, it's a problem. And the longer it goes on, where we don't remediate, the worse it gets, because then they affect adjoining trees. So, you know, it's any, any tree on any public area.
As long as you document it and let us know what you're doing, where you are, I'm fine.
Okay. Anybody else have any more questions?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Danielle, you go.
I just wanted to know, do they, do they have like a tracking system where they're actually documenting the fact that they've applied it to these trees? They're going to remove them, I guess, when the time comes to remove them? What's the system, I guess, or the process to ensure that the trees are watched, and that we're ensuring that, you know, things are removed when need be?
Well, I'm not sure about the removal process, because I don't, so what's happening is now these egg nests are already up in the trees, many trees. So you got, you got a couple of things going on. You want trees that aren't infected to be protected. So if these spotted lanternflies start climbing up the tree, you want the tape, the stick tape, to stop them. That's now, how long that tape stays there, or, or I guess a better question is, how long is that tape functional?
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if it spans more than one season. In other words, we may have to reapply these. The other side of this is, once the eggs hatch and there's tape on the trees, when they come down, my understanding is that perhaps we might be able to trap them there as well. And of course, you don't want to damage the birds. You want to, you want to save the bird population from any, any negative effects. So are we going to keep track of where we put these? The answer to that would be yes. I'm not sure how you, unless we're going to use GPS coordinates, the exact location of every single tree. My guess is we're going to do it like in area. And this tape and this wire will be noticeable when you see it. Hopefully, people won't decide to, you know, tear at it or remove it, but...
I just have a quick follow-up. So how many years have we been doing this?
We've never, we've never done it.
So we don't know if this is an effective way to treat it?
Well, we, Penn State has said that it is. So they don't, Penn State doesn't have a program, other than this physical barrier, to eradicate this pest. There's a lot of research going on in Penn State, is how can we stop them from reproducing, for example? What kind of pesticides would work that are non-toxic to other life forms? Is there a way we can, we can impact the, their food source? You know, are there some trees that we could remove, and they have a favorite tree, that we could remove that they don't, that wouldn't produce such a favorable result to the rest of the trees? So there's no good answer right now. But we do know this approach works. How effective it is, I don't know that Penn State can tell us that.
And is the... Our efforts are being fed into the data that Penn State is accumulating.
Correct.
Okay.
And the last question I had is, is this amount of material going to be enough to sustain us?
Well, we, we think so. That's why we put in an amount not to exceed $1,000. The tape is pretty inexpensive. The wire is pretty inexpensive. We believe it is. If it's not enough, we'll come back to the board. But initially, we were looking at just a few hundred dollars, and one of the members of our community, EAC community, said, hey, look, it could be more than that. Let's not lock ourselves into a position where we need the resources, and then there's not another Board of Supervisors meeting for a couple of weeks, and then we lose some more time. So that's why the amount is not to exceed $1,000. And if it exceeds that, or it looks like it exceeds that, then we'll know that in the forecast, and then we can come back before we run out.
So can you share the schedule and the targeted areas with the rest of the Board of Supervisors?
Yeah, when we get those published, sure.
Thank you.
Right. The big thing was, gee, we need this. We're behind the eight ball. We can't do anything unless we get it approved. So let's see what we can do to move this along, which put this on tonight's agenda.
Mark, you make sure that the staff is aware of the names of these individuals that are volunteering their time and services to do this work, and because they have to be recognized. I was involved with a tree program in the early 80s, and with Gypsy Boss. But it sounds like this is labor intense, and it sounds like your committee is volunteering to do this, and they have to be recognized at the end in some way, shape, or form.
Yeah, we're going to keep track of who's done what. We've had some other EAC field actions, right? At Pendleton Park, when we fixed the tree volcanoes and so forth, and we kept a roster of who participated, and how the outcome of that action was. So when we, we'll publish that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
No, I just like to, did we make him have a motion and approve?
Not yet. I'm getting there, Ed. All right.
I'd like to make that motion, and...
Okay. Ed's made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Next motion is a, well, Tom Spear, this is a resolution on 409 Old Pendleton Pike.
Resolution for condemnation.
Right. Resolution of condemnation. Could you fill us in on what this is all about, and as it applies to the sale and so forth, the two items on the agenda?
Okay. This is actually going to be two resolutions. The very first one is you're authorizing the condemnation of 409 Old Pendleton Pike. I have to say the parcel number, 390003169005, and we're authorizing the condemnation of the property for use as township storage, country equipment, recreation, and educational purposes. You are authorizing me to prepare the paperwork and file it, and you are authorizing the condemnation pursuant to the eminent domain code. So before we can go to the second motion, which is the purchase, we have to make the condemnation take place.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for our solicitor on the condemnation? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the condemnation of 409 Old Pendleton Pike?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, Tom, can you go on to the agreement of sale?
Part two is, is the settlement. It's a deed in lieu of condemnation. The deed, which you're allergic to typo in that, but there is a, the purpose is, the township has the authority to condemn... The deed, which you're allergic to typo in that, but there is a, the purpose is the township has the authority to condemn the property and take it, go to court if we have to and file the paperwork and just take the property. But we're required to pay just compensation. We made, we did have an appraisal on the property. And the owner of the property has, after some discussion, agreed to accept the amount of our appraisal as the purchase. So you are purchasing the property in accordance with the agreement of sale, which is for $560,000, which matches the appraisal you received from Kevin Flynn in November of last year. You're authorizing the chairman and the secretary to, to sign the agreement of sale that is attached. And you are authorizing the, the appraisal of the, the sale of the property and for title insurance and going through the process. This agreement is contingent on an environmental survey. Now, we're taking the property as is, except for environmental issues which you're not aware of. So you're also going to authorize in the next resolution, a, for the township engineer to perform or obtain a phase one environmental review of the property. Okay, so this is a summary of the motion. There's some background in it. But that motion is what the purpose is, is to accept the attached agreement of sale for $560,000 with the estate of Todd McCormick.
Okay. Do any of the supervisors have any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Can I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Next, it's authorization from Gilmore and Associates to perform a phase one environmental study. Now, we don't have anybody here from Gilmore, but Tom, I think you can explain to us exactly what a phase one environmental study is and why you're recommending that we should get that done.
Well, any property that you purchased, that you don't know what the use was, and there has been some business uses on this property. It's not just a pristine farm. But even in farms, you don't know what chemicals were used and what the property, the condition is. So it's prudent to have a phase one environmental examination. What that is, Ira consultant, who does basically a survey about the use of the property and just goes out and eyeballs the property to see if there's anything that looks out of the ordinary. If they do find a history of use, say underground storage tanks, you know, a use of, one of the most dangerous places apparently are like sod farms. They find the chemicals were used on the property over the years that could be, be dangerous. Then you have to go to a phase two and find out, you do more serious testing like drilling, finding out what's there and you will come up with an abatement plan. Hopefully we won't find anything. And that's what you do. Phase one is just to see if there's any obvious issues that you should find. Phase two is an invasive test. And it would mean that you'd have to find out, you have found a problem in the phase one and you're going for it also with a remediation plan. So the case, if we find you have a very expensive remediation plan, you can get out of this deal. That's a contingency, that you get a satisfactory phase one exam.
Okay. That sounds very, very prudent thing to do. Do, do any of the supervisors have any questions about doing a phase one environmental study?
No, I'm all for it.
Okay, sounds good. Can I have a motion to conduct a phase one environmental study?
So moved.
Second, okay. Everybody in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you very much for that, Tom.
Okay, well, thank you.
Appreciate it. Now we move to the manager's report. Okay, Craig.
Yes, there's a couple of things that I don't know if we mentioned that this board had an executive session on May 6th for personnel issues. We had interviews with volunteers, potential volunteers for the board. Just wanted to mention that. And we also have a, a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night for the same purpose, a personnel matter with interviewing volunteers. The, I spoke with the park director or the recreation director today on summer camp and summer concert series. I have another meeting with her tomorrow. She had a webinar with the Parker Rec Society of Pennsylvania today about holding camp and so forth. But it sounds like we will be canceling the summer camp unless somehow we get to green by, you know, beginning of June. And I, I don't see that happening, but, and the same with the, the concert series. Sounds like we'll be canceling both of those activities this summer for the township. And other than that, the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 26th. It will be another virtual meeting as this one is, and all the information will be sent out to everyone prior to that meeting.
Thank you. Well, I've got Frank on the, on the line here. Frank, I've heard some conflicting information about the school year. Have you heard any, any, anything you could share about September's schools opening up again?
I have not heard anything for the fall. We all know that this, obviously this year is gone. But the 2021 year, I'm not sure. The 1920 year is, is shot. So I don't, I haven't heard anything definitive.
Have any other supervisors heard anything about the September school year? No.
There was a statement made today by the, the secretary for the Department of Education, who, he basically said, as he saw right now, and this is on the Department of Education's website and in the Inquirer, he believed that they were going to go forward with in-person school for the 2021 year. But that was just made today and.
Who knows? Right? So, okay. All right. Thank you. As in the past, we, we have a section at the end, slot at the end where the supervisors can comment. Ed Brandt, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Mark, do you want to offer public comment?
Sure. Does a member of the public have anything that they would like to share or say?
You here with us? They're all on mute, so I guess not.
I don't see, there's, there's no emails. There's no chat. There's no raising of the hand.
Okay.
Okay, so I do, and it dovetails off of Ed's comments before we, you opened the meeting, Mark. And I apologize, I'm audio only. I had surgery today. Half of my head is bandaged and I look like a, a mummy right now. So that's why you just have my voice. But I would like to acknowledge the fact that we have a lot of graduates in Wissahicken, Gwinnett Mercy, VA, wherever lower Gwinnett residents are graduating from high school as well as from college. And this is a really challenging situation, not only for the students, but their parents, that they don't get to have the benefit of, you know, culminating their four years of hard work and having that celebratory culmination of it. And I'm just trying to think of what token lower Gwinnett Township can do to acknowledge our students who aren't being recognized in a traditional manner. And at the very least, I am hoping that maybe we could put banners where we normally do on Bethlehem Pike and Norristown Road and up by the BMW dealership, just, just, you know, praising and acknowledging our graduates on all levels. And I think our community could use it. I know our graduates would appreciate it. And I'm hoping that I could get the acquiescence of my fellow supervisors to kind of work towards something of that nature to acknowledge our graduates in lower Gwinnett Township.
Kathleen, this is Danielle. I just wanted to jump in. I had been in conversations, I guess, with the mayor of Ambler and the chairwoman for Whipane Township since, I guess, the middle of April about coordinating efforts to try and do something for the Wissahicken graduates and, and our private and parochial schools that have students in our areas and in our respective townships and boroughs. Ambler had come up with the decision that they were going to do banners. They were also going to do yard signs and potentially a parade. Whipane, unlike us and Ambler, does not have light lampposts. So they were having the difficulty of figuring out how they could get banners to represent the students that lived in Whipane. I reached out to Craig, who reached out to the Wissahicken School District so that we could get further information as to what the school district had planned so that we didn't overstep anything that they already had in the works. Through the school district, Craig was able to get, gather information that they already do have plans and that us doing banners that would be individualized for the students would conflict with what they had already planned. So we had kind of reconvened the Ambler Borough Mayor and the Chairwoman of Whipane. And Ambler still is going to go forward with their banners. I don't believe that they will be personalized to a degree. But they had Germantown Academy and they had Ambler Catholic that were very excited about having some recognition because they would be outside of the Wissahicken School District. They also said that they would be doing yard signs. And Whipane had indicated that they would be doing a parade. Their chief of police, Ken Lawson, indicated that he would be the point person for contact. So I gave Craig that information as well as to reach out to Roman, who is the township manager in Whipane to coordinate. So I believe that the ball is somewhat rolling. I just wanted to reach out to Craig to see if you could give us any kind of update.
I reached out to Chief Kenny and maybe Paul, you can follow up with what the chief from Whipane informed you of.
Sure. So it was early last week when Chief Lawson called me about things that Whipane Township were planning. And it was mentioned of a, a parade of cars starting at the high school, looping down Bethlehem Pike, down Butler, down 73, up Pendleton Pike, back to school. And there was a lot of discussion back and forth. And Whipane wants to do this, you know, the idea was that we did it on the night of graduation, I believe, of what would have been graduation, June 4th. I said to the chief from Whipane, I said, did you talk to Dr. Chrisfield about that? And he hadn't. So I said, well, I'm going to call Dr. Chrisfield and I'll get back to you. I called Dr. Chrisfield. He told me that they, they have plans in the works for an event to take place on August 2nd at the high school. Followed by plans for August 3rd of maybe a prom taking place. And all of this was on the condition that the governor allowed it. When I mentioned, you know, I didn't even bring up the other date. I got the impression, well, I was told August 2nd is the date when, that they're working on things. And I told him we would provide any and all support that we could. We would lead the parade. We'd, you know, control traffic for a parade of cars. We would make sure it be safe, all on the condition that the governor would allow it. Even if we go to this next color zone, the fear was that there still will not be allowed any gatherings of people, that they'd have to remain in their cars. So I got back to Kenny Lawson and just said, listen, the school's working on something. I told him we would support it. And that's kind of where I left it, that they asked for our guidance on a route. I gave it to him. I told him we would help them any way possible, but it was put on this August date. So the plans are out there, but they're really depending on what the governor has to say.
Yeah, and I had a conversation with Liz Kuznier, the Ambler Street manager. And they are going forth with their plans with these banners on their streetlights. From what she told me, they're doing it independently. They're not really, they're not getting support in terms of identifying Ambler Borough graduates to her. She's doing that handpicked. It seems to me that the Wissahicken School District, BZB, Chrisfield, is they have their plans and they're sticking to their plans. That's fine. But my proposal is for lower Gwinnett Township graduates a banner to the likes of what appears on Norristown and Bethlehem, as I said, and up at the BMW dealerships where we, where we normally put the banners for the Pike Fest. And just, you know, I don't know what it would look like, but I think it would be a great gesture to our community. The parading, the, you know, the drive-bys and all that stuff, that's very logistically challenging. I just think it would be a nice, simple, affordable gesture to our community who I think are hurting for it. So.
Well, I, if I may, I would second that as we all have seen on public networks, other communities doing this. I would defer in reference to the school district, like Paul said, work with the school district there. What I would mention, add to Kathy's thoughts are if you recognize graduates with banners, which I, I think it's the least we could do, is we have to also recognize graduates, not only from Wissahicken, but Gwinnett Mercy and, and other schools in general that students from our community may go to that may not be Wissahicken or, or Gwinnett Mercy Academy. So we have to be careful at that extent. But I think the conversation with reference to Wissahicken is excellent. And knowing what my son is doing over in New Jersey, they also have pinpointed the August dates. And they're moving everything later in the summer. And but with reference to lower Gwinnett residents, I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that we have graduates other than just Wissahicken. So that's, that's all I'd like to add.
I just want to say, I agree, Mr. Brand. I think that if we do a large banner that's not specific to any school or any individual, that just is congratulating graduates that.
Yes, high school, college, eighth grade, kindergarten, just our graduates, the milestones, right?
And Danielle, I'd like to compliment you with your conversations that you have had already with Whipane, Ambler and so forth, so that we're, we're working with our fellow communities and municipalities. Thank you for doing that.
So this is something that we're all in agreement on. Craig, do you need anything from us or just?
Just a check.
Just a check.
We need to make a motion so that we can move forward to, to purchase and obtain design and erect a banner.
I did talk to Sandy, who orders these banners regularly for the concerts and Pike Fest and whatnot. It's well below a thousand dollar expenditure. Craig, does that sound about right? In your recollection?
I would, sure, thousand dollars.
Sure, it's in somebody's budget, especially after hearing the good first quarter reports that it must be, fit in somebody's budget. I don't think we need a special motion, but if, if a manager wants that, then fine.
We need, we need a motion, definitely.
I'll make a motion so that we can purchase design and erect. I'll make a motion so that we can purchase, design and erect a, a banner to honor our graduates.
And I would say two banners, Danielle, one down at the major intersection in Spring House and up there by BMW.
Yes.
Before we go further with this, Paul Kenny, is there any issue with hanging a banner over the pipe? It's a state road.
No, that's not what we're suggesting.
We're talking about the corner, catty corner to the, like, BMW shippable on that corner and down there by the name.
You're suggesting a ground banner.
Yes.
Right, so, but I'm back, back to Paul. Paul, is there a, any restriction that you're aware of if we could string one across the pipe?
No.
I don't know about that.
That might delay it because we permission from PennDOT.
Yeah, I think you would have a problem putting it across the street. I think what you're talking about is fine.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know. I think if you put it across the street, it could be, I think you'd need some state permission.
Bethlehem Pike crosses county line, so it's a state road, so you would have to get PennDOT.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And not to shut it down for Pike Fest, we'd have to get the same permission.
Right. I think what you're talking about is the property where the, the line used to be.
Yeah.
And BMW's corner, which is private property.
Yeah, but he's a good friend. He's a good community friend. He'll let us to it.
Yeah.
Okay. So I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That's it. You're the only supervisor who hasn't spoke.
Thank you. I, I guess the only concerns aside from also saying to the public that our, our heart once again goes out to all of those who have lost loved ones in this pandemic. I'd like to raise a couple of concerns that we need to maybe help our community understand, which is what we're going to do for voting next month for our primary. And also to understand and help encourage people to complete the census if, if that deadline hasn't already passed. So I know there's a lot of controversy about voting this time and I'm not sure if all of the specifics have even been worked out, but it's something that as a township, we need to make sure people are aware that there's going to be fewer precincts or fewer polling sites. And people are actually being encouraged to vote by mail this time as much as possible. So I'd like to just get that into the record and hope that we can encourage people to not sit back and avoid voting, but to get out there and cast their ballot.
Craig, do you have anything to share on the polling places? I know there's going to, there's an effort afoot to only have polling places in the future at schools.
Just for the primary this year, but it, that was passed on Monday, that all the, the voting normal voting places will be at the Wesahican High School this year.
The, the
Yeah, that's not correct.
Three precincts will be at the Wesahican High School and three will be at the Wesahican Administration Building. So polling precinct 11, 13 and 21 is going to be at the high school. And then 12, 14 and 22 will be at the Wesahican Administration Building.
Basically collapsing six into two, and we should get that up on the website.
Yes. So they did pass it yesterday at the Board of Election.
I, I have that ready to go on the website.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to contribute? Okay, thank you everybody for attending and stay safe. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, guys.